Hi everyone, my name is Mohammed Sibki. I'm the AIA Summit Your County Chapter President. I want to welcome you all to our September AREE 5.0 study session. Today, we are very excited to have Isha Mura with us for the third time as she will be reviewing trusses. Before we start, I'd like to make a few chapter announcements. First, we want to say thank you to our sponsors. Our AREE series sponsor Heather Young Architects, our golf chapter sponsors, ceramic engineers and MN builders, and our silver chapter sponsors Da Vinci Marble and BKG Structural Engineers. Session rules: Please mute yourself to reduce background noise. Feel free to unmute and ask questions at any time. Also, feel free to add questions to the chat box below. Do not discuss any specific exam questions. That's not permitted by NCARP and not that this session is being recorded. Now, I did post all the sessions to our YouTube channel. So if you just go to YouTube and you search "AIA Summit Your County", you should be able to find the channel and find all the AREE study sessions since early this year. Okay, a little bit about our guest speaker. So, Isha Mura PE is an award-winning licensed engineer with DPR Construction. Her background includes building enclosures and structural engineering, and she specializes in facades and prefabricated structures for higher education and healthcare markets. She recently moved from Phoenix where she served in leadership roles with the Structural Engineering Association, Women in Healthcare, and was involved with various other organizations. She's excited to be in Newport Beach and can't wait to be involved with the community here locally and with California as a whole. During the weekends, she loved to host dinner parties and try new restaurants with her husband. Other than eating, she enjoyed going hiking with her dog and spending time with her friends and family. With that, I won't stop sharing my screen, and Isha can take it from here.
All right, can everyone see my screen?
Not yet.
How about now?
Yes, yes, yep.
Excellent, and I have the chat box this time, so we're good.
Oh, cool, cool.
Situated, then we'll get started. Okay, so we're going to start off with today's topic of trusses. And then, at the end of this presentation, I know that the last presentation, there were six homework problems. I was a bad student, and I only got through the first four problems myself. And unfortunately, my scanner didn't work, but I do have them. So, as soon as I finish the last two tonight, I'll make sure to use my home scanner and then send this over to you guys through Mohammed. And if you guys have any questions on the first four, let me know. And then, if you have questions on the last two, my email is ishamn@dpr.com, and feel free to email me. All right, so getting started with trusses. So I'm going to start a little bit on the concepts, kind of some concept questions, and then we'll go into a few examples. So trusses, I guess a question for the crowd, like what are some common uses for trusses? Where have you guys seen them used in the past? I know a really easy one would be like roof trusses, but what are some other ones?
Any place where they don't want to use a lot of wood and still want to span larger areas?
Yeah.
And also...
Oops, sorry, I cut you off.
No worries. And also at places where, because if we use truss, then wood does not rot or have infestation. So like those places where we don't want to cover things up and where moisture is a problem.
Yeah. Um, so, and I think maybe I didn't phrase the question right. But I was looking for answers like, you know, some uses would be like for bridges or antenna towers, Eiffel Tower. But I do agree, you know, when with what? I'm sorry, I missed S. Joshi. I missed what your first name was, but just like how you were saying, the trusses are used, other than beams, in a very efficient way, you know, for making room for ducts or, you know, moisture and issues, issues like that. All right, so truss versus... So there's two concepts here. A truss usually is compromised, or it tends to be very triangular in shape. And trusses are considered to be very stable. And part of that is because it doesn't allow for rotation. And I'll go into a little bit more on this in a minute. But something that I want to point out is that not to mistake trusses with frames. And actually, let's go over the anatomy of a truss, then we'll come back to the topic of truss versus frame. So trusses, generally, they compromise of like a top cord, your bottom cord, and webs are, they're also known as members, or truss members. And then, sometimes in the center, there's what they call a keem post. Each of the ends, they have their bearing points and gussets that are like connection points between each of the trusses, or between each of the members. And there's a couple different types of trusses. And here's a few. And there could be potentially a concept question, maybe, maybe not, of like identifying what kind of truss there is. And the most common ones are actually Ho, Pratt, and Warren truss. And while I was preparing for this presentation, I actually learned that these are patented, and they were patented back in the 1840s. And particularly during that time, because it was when the railroad industry was, I guess, a little bit more active than is today. And I would also really recommend watching this particular YouTube video of Efficient Engineer. This screenshot will be in the notes that Mohammed will send over after today's session. But the visuals and stuff in this presentation were amazing. So if you guys need another one or another one to refer to, I would definitely highly recommend it. All right. And just like you guys mentioned earlier, trusses do come in various different materials. This is a picture of a cold form steel truss. Then there is this open web, like bar joists type of truss. And then, of course, the wood truss with the gusset plates that we kind of looked at earlier. All right. So now going into truss analysis. So here's a kind of like step-by-step breakdown of how to do a truss analysis. And I'm just going to have this off to the side as we go through some of the examples. Or actually, if you guys could take a screenshot of it, just because there isn't a whole lot of room here. I think that would work out better. So, so the very first thing is to essentially take your structure, which is here, and simplifying it down to a free body diagram. And so for your free body diagram, you turn it into a stick figure and kind of label each of your members. In this particular model, it doesn't really show each of the joints labeled, but I like to label the joints alphabetically A, B, C, D, in clockwise direction. So, so first example, we're going to go over method of joints. And then the second example, we're going to go over method of sections. So, yeah, we have our truss, and then we're going to simplify it into a free body diagram. And these are, this is using the same concept that we learned from our beam course where we did moment and shear. So, for A, since that was a pin connection, we obviously have our reaction in the X direction and our reaction in the Y direction is beam resistant. And then, because C is a rolling, we have our C only resisting in the Y direction. I'm also going to take this opportunity to sidebar a little bit into zero-force members. So before we start calculating this out, I'm going to use the concept of zero-force members to simplify this truss even further. So, a zero-force member is internally depends on how the forces applied, or how forces are applied onto the structure. But there's two, there's two conditions. One condition is if you have a member or three members, where there's one, two, one perpendicular. And since forces are always acting against each other or canceling each other out, the anything that is within the same plane would have a force. But then, if there isn't a force acting perpendicular, then the member here is considered as a zero-force member. Similarly, the second condition would be when you have two members. And if there isn't any force acting on either of the members, then that could be, both of them could be considered as a zero-force member. So over here, which two member sets would be considered zero-force members? You could either answer in the chat box, or if you want to unmute yourself, you can answer that way as well. Yep, DC is considered as a zero-force member. Perfect. And oftentimes, zero-force members are denoted with a O symbol, as shown. Right. So, now that we have that out of the way, we can go ahead and delete these to further simplify our truss. Actually, going back another concept regarding zero-force members. One could be asking the question, why would we even have a zero-force member if it's just adding, you know, additional material that you don't really need? If it's truly a zero-force member, that might actually be the case, which is unlikely in real practice. But sometimes, let's say if this load wasn't acting here, this span could be considered too long. And maybe to resist buckling, additional members would need to be added to kind of help stiffen it up without having a beam or a web member be incredibly large as far as their cross-section goes. And when we get into cross-sectional properties at a later session, we'll definitely go over those concepts. Okay. So now that we have this simplified with our zero members, we can go down to drawing our free body diagram. Sorry, I thought a question came up. All right, so the first thing is we need to solve for our unknowns before we go into solving for our joint members. So we're going to treat this just like a beam. So ignore everything in between. And so our step one would be to solve for your Ay, Ax, and Cy. So we have our five kips that's acting right in the middle. And since this is acting, well, it's not officially shown exactly, no, but since this is acting right in the middle, we know that we can easily divide it between the, evenly between the two reactions here. And since we know that there isn't any forces acting horizontally, our Ax is equal to zero. All right. So, now that we have, now that we have step one A done, the next step is, or sorry, now that we have step one done, our next step would be to use method of joints and going to each joint and solving the forces that are acting on them. So for the very first one, we're going to draw for joint A. And we're just going to label each of these as like AB and AC. We're showing these arrows, and we're going to assume all members are in tension. And a good way to memorize this would be if you were to hold your hand up and you're pulling on your thumb, you're experiencing tension at your, like, joint right here. So, and then if you're pushing down into it, then you're experiencing compression. So that could be a good rule of thumb, I guess. All right, so now that we have this joint, we're going to, once again, solve for, solve for our unknowns. And since, oh, something I didn't provide on this problem was dimensions. Sorry about that, right? So let's assume that this entire distance is six feet. And the height is five feet. And this is acting in the middle, so it's acting at three feet. Okay. So going back to step three joint A. So for AB, we know that it's acting at an angle. So we want to break it down into its X and Y component. So, let's copy this over and start breaking it down into its X and Y component. So we're going to call this AB sub Y. And we're going to call its X component AB sub X. Okay. And then we're going to use what we, we're going to use some of the forces, and we're going to first solve for our Y component, since both of these are unknown. And then, once we solve for the Y component, then we can try and solve for the X component. And so, using some of the forces in the Y direction, we have it solved out in separate sheet. So using some of the forces in the Y direction, we know that this is acting upwards. So we're going to call it 2.5 kips acting upwards, so positive. And we know that AB sub Y is assumed to be in tension, so positive and acting upwards. So then, we're going to say plus AB sub Y. So then, we solve it out by subtracting two and a half on either side. Then we get AB sub Y equals negative 2.5. So now that we have that, we can use trigonometry to then solve for, to then solve for our X component. To do a quick review of trig, there's that saying that goes so cos, where S is your sine of whatever your degrees are, over your opposite, over your hypotenuse. Cosine of your degree is equal to adjacent over hypotenuse. And tangent of whatever your degrees are is equal to opposite over adjacent. I know that I tend to get confused sometimes with like degrees or what's appropriate to use in this direction. So I find it a lot easier to use similar triangles when analyzing the X and Y direction. So with this example, or I'll show that in a moment. But to define it, this is weird. So if your degrees was occurring here, then it would be opposite, adjacent, and then this would be your hypotenuse. All right, so going back, so for our ADX. Or actually, before I go to that, does anybody have any questions so far? T. Young asks, are we assuming angle B is 90 degrees? Well, I don't know. I would have to... Wait, I don't think it can be 90 degrees. This is five feet, and this is six feet. So probably somewhere pretty close. I think if this was also six feet, then it would be the perfect square for it being 90 degrees. Does anybody else have any questions so far?
And feel free to unmute and ask your questions. We just said, like, mute yourself if you are really not speaking, just to reduce background noise, because we have a lot of people online. But for any question, just feel free to unmute and ask the question. Yeah, thanks.
All right. So... So in this particular case, we know that this condition here, that our opposite is five feet, our adjacent is six divided by two, so three feet. Realistically, it looks like this. So then, to solve for AB sub X, using similar triangles, we're just going to set up our equation where it's where it's going to be AB sub Y over the distance of five feet, since this force corresponds with this length. And then, eight pieces of X, which we don't know yet, corresponds with our shorter length, three feet. So to solve for AB sub X, we just move this over by multiplying it to AB sub Y, which is equal to negative 2.5, and divided by five. So does anybody want to do the math real quick for me? So does anybody want to do the math real quick for me? And tell me what AB sub x is equal to? Yep. Thank you. That was good. All right, so so we have our y component and we have our x component. So now we need to come up with what our AB is. So to solve for that, I think it's called the Pythagorean theorem. It's been a few years. Where it's just a squared plus b squared equals c squared. And we can all, we can only use this when assuming things are at like a right triangle. So since we need this cut here, and since this is a right triangle, that is correct. Charlie, that AB sub x should be negative since there is a negative sign here. So using I took the negatives out of this equation for now. So can somebody solve this out for me on the calculator and tell me what c is equal to? Thank you. All right. So because we had solved it out as negative here, we already know that this was assumed in the right, wrong direction, but instead of it being in tension, that it's in compression. And now we know that our final force is AB equals 2.92 kips. So over here, we're simply going to write 2.92 kips. All right. So now that we have AB, the next thing that we need to solve for is AC at this joint. And sorry, well, isn't writing the steps as we were going, so let me write that down for your notes. So we copy this back over here. So since we know that the why is equal to 2.5. And AB sub x is equal to 1.5. And since we had solved those as negative, to turn them into positive, you would need to represent the arrows in the other direction. So now this becomes positive. And then we solve for AC using some of the forces in the x direction. So since these are acting in opposite directions, one of the directions in our equation has to be negative. So for the sake of, for the sake of this conversation, we're going to say that AB sub x is the negative 1.5. So negative 1.5. So when you solve for that, your AC is equal to 1.5. And since AC is equal to 1.5 and not a negative number, we know that our bottom core is therefore truly in tension. Was there any questions regarding that? So in our diagram, we're just going to put the AC is so the nice thing about this trust being symmetrical is that essentially you could break this in half and it's a mirror image of each other. So BC is equal to AB. And that's how you use method of joints to solve for all the forces that occurs within, within your trust.
The beginning of that diagram, the very first page, like what was the original question?
Oh, the question was simply to, that we were going to go through and solve out all the forces in the member.
Okay. And we have, but someone would have to let us know that that was an equal amount of track, right?
Yep. And if you were given this question, they would give you either the dimensions or the or whatever your degrees are to solve it out. I don't, I don't think on the actual exam that they're going to have you solve out for your I don't think they're going to ask you to solve out a full trust. But by walking through this and kind of understanding how to solve it out, then they may ask you a question of like, is this member in tension or compression? So they might have most of it already solved out for you on the actual exam. All right. I think we're ready to move on to method of sections. Right, so for this example, let's go ahead and assume that every single member is 10 feet. This is another one of those where the problem would be given, or if these dimensions would be given in the original problem statement. So, and let's say your problem statement asks you to solve for the force that is acting in member B and C. So when it comes to doing method of sections, you would want to try to cut through as few members as possible. Ideally, no more than 3. So in this case, it's pretty easy to cut through these 3 numbers. Here. And I'm actually, sorry, I'm skipping ahead. So before you make your cut, the first thing to do is to solve for your reaction. So and maybe you might not need to do that, but we'll do it for this case. So assuming this is a pinned and brewer condition again, so you have your A sub y and your E sub y and your A sub x acting in this direction. Sorry, the Zoom program has this like pop down menu and then it pretty much blocks my access to trying to get to it. And once again, the nice thing about this being symmetrical is that and no forces acting in the x direction is that your A sub x is equal to 0 and your A sub y is equal to your E sub y, which is half of your total sum of the forces. So in this case, your A sub y is equal to 7.5. And E sub y is equal to 7.5. All right, now that we have this, now we can break, break our trust. So with break our trust, we have 3 numbers that are unknown. And do is take a screenshot of this and put it down below. So now you have your 3 numbers that are unknown, which is HG here and then BG here and BC here. And the reason why I made, the reason why I chose this side in lieu of this side, even though it may seem like, well, there's less loads and there's less stuff going on over here. Well, they're asking for what the force is in BC. And when we do that, when we take care of some of the moments to try to solve for this, which I'll go over in a minute, it's a lot easier to do it on this side because with both of these being unknown, you're trying to get rid of as many unknowns as possible. So to solve for this, we'll take, I'm going to be taking my, some of the moments about point D. And so if I take this out around here, we're just going to walk through every single one of our forces. So we know that the 5 kips that occurs on point D is occurring 10 feet away. So the equation is going to be 5 kips times 10 feet. The next force that's acting is another 5 kips at point C. And that's occurring 20 feet away. So we're going to and in this case, we're assuming that counterclockwise is positive. So sorry. It's positive. So 5 kips. Right. So our next force is our unknown BC. And since we don't know what BC is, we're just going to label it times a distance of 10 feet. And since we're assuming it's in And since we're assuming it's in tension for now, then that means it's also going counterclockwise. So BC times 10 feet. And then lastly, these two forces. Well, we... Actually, now that I think about it, this might not have been the smartest move to do my rotation about E. And the reason why would be because now for this unknown number, we have both in the x direction and the y direction. And the y direction of this piece is 20 feet away. So that wasn't the smartest move on my part. Because then I'm gonna end up having two unknowns in my equation and having to solve for them. So the smarter thing, so I'm gonna scratch I'm gonna scratch this, would be actually to take my moment around point G. And when I do that, that means that both of these forces is acting at a distance of zero. So that gets rid of both of these unknowns. And we know what our forces are here, here, and here. And the only force that is unknown is BC. So we're gonna start over again. So some of the moments around point G equals zero. So from this distance, this also gets rid of the five kips that's acting directly down here. So now the only two forces really that we would be, or three forces that we're utilizing in this equation is BC, those five kips, and EY. So walking in the other direction, once again, BC is going counterclockwise, which we're setting as our positive direction. So AC times 10 feet. Plus... So our next force being five kips at a distance of 10 feet around point G. Well, now this is acting clockwise. So then that means based on our sign convention, it's negative. So it's negative five kips. And then we have a reaction here of EY equals 7.5 times our total distance of 20 feet. Acting counterclockwise, we're setting it as positive. 7.5 times 20 feet. And now we can, now in this equation, BC is our only unknown. So if we solve for BC, I don't know if you guys are already ahead of me and have solved for it. Now. So subtracting it from this side, bring it over. So from... So once I add up 50 kip feet, plus 100, or negative 50 kip feet, plus 150 kip feet, 150, I get 100 kip feet and then divide that by my negative 10 foot here. So then my BC equals 10 kips. But it's negative. So that means BC is in compression. And that is essentially method of sections. Does anybody have any questions? All right. So if not, do you guys have any questions on the homework problems from last week? I think, so that concludes the presentation on classes. So if there isn't any trust question, then we can move on to any homework problem questions.
I don't see any questions in the chat box, so...
All right. So I think we're ending about 30 minutes early today.
And yes, I see a question. Will this presentation be shared with the notes? We can share this, Aisha, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, yes. So we will email everyone on this meeting. The notes, the meeting notes, the presentation.
Yeah, I feel like I'm asking a stupid question, but I really never learned all this in school. So it might be, you know, very basic for you. Can you go up a couple of the pages where you went and solved for? Let's see, this one. How did you come up with that equation? Zero equals A B sub x plus A C? Like, how was that? And then why wasn't it doubled since we only found half of the triangle versus the both sides of the triangle? Like, can you explain that a little bit to me?
Sure. All right, so going back a little bit is... So for your first question of like, why is this zero equals A B sub x plus A C? So what we're doing here is static equilibrium. And static equilibrium is when the sum of the forces are equal to zero. And the idea is that, like, let's say if... Let's say, let's pretend that, actually, I have a computer, so I don't have to do hand motions. So I have my floor, right? And there is a force that gets applied onto the floor. Well, my floor needs to be able to resist that force. So I'm going to be designing my floor to be able to resist the exact opposite amount of force that is being applied on it. I don't remember which Newton law this is, but it means that the equal and opposite force... I don't remember exactly how it's phrased either right now. It's way too late in the day. Basically, the idea is that you're in static equilibrium, equal and opposite forces.
Rule out to make it work. Okay, yeah, that's understandable.
Cool. So in this particular case, when we came up with our joint, so the first thing we did was we solved for our A sub y and A sub x, just like a theme. We found that A sub x is equal to zero and E sub y is equal to 2.5. So I'm gonna So each of our members that are here, when forces are applied onto the trust, those members are essentially exerting forces to our joints. And so that's why we always assume that an arrow out of the joint. So going back to that thumb example, we're setting all these arrows equal to tensions. So outwards from her joint that occurs there. So we're just gonna represent this circle as a joint. So what I did was I took this as its own free body diagram and essentially copied and pasted it here. And since this is equal to zero, that means no force is acting there. So that's why I did not include my A sub x equals to zero here. So once I got this free body diagram that's here, you know that this is acting at some angle. And because it's acting at an angle, there's going to be a y and x component to it. So I further broke down this free body diagram from this into this.
Okay, okay, yeah, it's becoming clearer. Thanks.
And do you have it from here or do you want me to...
Pad down to that one equation and let me see if I understand my head. So I understand that A B sub x is one of the forces. You're adding AC, that's another force.
Yep. So AC is this force right here because it's a force that goes from A to C.
Okay, thank you.
I just had the same doubt. I had a small doubt in the same area. In the diagram, you made A B x as positive, but in the equation, you have used it, flipped it out as negative so that AC becomes 1.5 since you knew that it was in tension. But I was trying to figure why you did that because could explain why you made the A B x as positive in the diagram, but in the equation, it's negative.
Yep. So I think the best way I can explain it would be, so in school, when we had those our x axis and our y axis, right? And so we're gonna call this our zero point. So anything that moves above the zero point is positive, right?
Right.
And anything that goes below the zero point is negative, right? So then, just like that, anything that goes towards the right is positive. And anything that goes to the left is negative.
Okay.
So when we flip this around to kind of show that the force is acting in compression. However, when you're applying it to your equation, that's when this concept comes into play because that force is in that direction.
Okay.
It's negative.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I'm gonna try and find a scanner that works so I can get you your solutions from last week. And I'm gonna look for some simple trust homework problems that way you guys can do some method of joints and sections, example problems as well. And I was trying to think of some like concept related ones that will be closer to what you'll see on the exam for classes. And then something that's a one, two minute problem, hopefully.
That would be great. Yeah, thank you all for attending. I will be emailing the presentation, the slides, and I will be uploading the YouTube, the recording to YouTube over the weekend. If you have not been receiving my emails or the slides from last time, just send me an email. Just email me and I will make sure to add you to the list. Thank you so much, Aisha. This was a great presentation with a lot of good information. So thank you so much for all your time.
Thanks, Mohammed and Aisha.
Yeah, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So thank you all. Have a good night and good luck with your exams. Good luck studying.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Bye bye.